Yes, we're streaming. So, on the salt sand shed, I understood last week, I hadn't provided you, I updated you two meetings ago, I think, on what C.B. Davis said, but I haven't provided you his written comments, so I provided them here. I looked at Jack's approach, it was basically a recommendation to try it for a year, I don't know if I would, I mean, and then Al Hodgson's approach is essentially, and he stamped it, says, "Put another tube, but half-size fans lower on the wall and keep the upper one." So, if you look at C.B. Davis's recommendation, it essentially says you need 12,000 more CFM in there at least, so, to get to the required air exchange rate. So, I went up to the Smithfield salt sand shed to check that out, that also has two, but they're right up near the top, and that salt and sand shed isn't much smaller than ours, it's a little bit smaller, but it's a, so they had two fans up near the top, I couldn't get in, David wasn't around, or at least I couldn't find him that day. So, if you want, we can carry this forward, but it's going to be hard to get someone in to do it before he puts up salt, he's going to need to start putting up salt sometime at the end of August, early September. So, you know, I wished I could tell you more, I wish I had the answer, we tried to get the answer, you know, going through a couple companies.
Any chance you'd run Jack's concept by Al?
I did.
What did he think?
Well, he verbally, he told me, he said, "Well, I don't necessarily agree with that concept," that's all he would say. I can bring Al in to a meeting if you want, I can...
He's a professional engineer, I don't know if Jack is too big.
Well, it's, I mean, conceptually, I understand what he's trying to say, but from my perspective, and I don't know who else has engineering background, but you open that up, you're just, your fan's going to be above it, right? And you're going to be pulling air from there, and I mean, I don't see, I don't really see the benefit, but that's me, and I'm not saying Jack's wrong, I'm just saying I don't see the benefit.
Well, I think what he's saying is the fan on the top there, there's not enough cross-ventilation, so, like, in a barn, you would pop open the doors on the top, or on the opposite end of the barn, then you've got an airflow that goes through, because one's smaller than the other one.
Well, I understand what he's saying, I just don't know if I agree with what he's saying, I guess that's the point I'm making.
Well, if you put the two small fans in there, that'll give us the 12 CFM.
That should give us more than the 12 CFM.
Right, so that kind of aligns with Davis's saying, he was going to say...
I mean, I don't know what to do, we went to an engineer, we got an engineer...
We got an engineer.
I know, but we had an engineer build it in the first place.
And I know, somebody signed off before they should.
And the other conversation we had was, does it make sense for us to put two half-size fans in there, or does it just make sense for us to put two full-size fans in there?
That's, that's the whole point, I think Al's point, in terms of the two half-size fans, is that you get the same, you're going to get the same ventilation increase, but you have it from three locations, and I believe his point, just interpreting based on what I've talked to him and what I've read, is that now you're going to be pulling from two sides, or you're going to get, you're not going to get it straight up over as a shortcut, you're going to get other pathways for the air being pulled. Look at...
One of the other problems over there is, the building's going east to west, and it's not getting the crosswinds like it should, the trees rounded up, shell turned, I thought of this thing that Jack said, and I'm not comfortable about cutting holes through that wall, I just...
You just take off panels, if I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just not comfortable with that. I think it's a great idea, but I think we need to go with an engineer that's going to put us together. We've got people working in there, I think that's my personal opinion.
And David is saying, "Look, I'm going to be putting up sand soon," so I'm trying to get it resolved, I wish I knew what else to do, I've gone to site visits on, you know, the Sydney facility, they don't seem to have a problem, but they have the two, you know, side by side, I think I showed pictures.
I have recourse if we have the smaller fans put in, and they don't work.
Well, I mean, you could always go after the engineer, I mean, he's...
Probably the same recourse as we've got up there now.
Well, we had, we had...
Well, that sounds about the same recourse that we have with Jack's proposal.
Well, we had a recourse when you originally had the building built, you actually went after that for a second fan, so a second fan was installed, a larger fan, you had a 36-inch fan, and a larger fan was then installed, and so, and then, after all of that, there were still problems.
According to an engineer, was that going to work?
Well, I don't know, I didn't read any, I'm just talking about what the engineer provided you, and then, according to what I've read in the history, when that, when you were still having problems, there was a sign-off, there was a sign-off for $13,600 or something like that, where you agreed to let the engineer, when I say "you," I don't mean you.
I know.
The board agreed to let the engineer for that price be resolved of any of the other issues that you had going on, so...
I don't remember that, but that's fine, and that probably was on the board...
Yeah, there was an agreement, I...
I don't, but I don't remember it coming to the board.
See, and I'd like to see those pieces in place, I just hate for us to do something else, because an engineer's told us to do so, and I know we've got to get it resolved, because we can't have an unhealthy breathing situation in there, and we have had it for way too long.
Well, we, if we just...
And it's no different than when we had the bat issue in the old town office, and, you know, we keep...
Well, remember, the history here, at least from my perspective, we had a, the contractor, David Trask, give us a proposal, early in the spring, that said we wanted to put a fan on top, and leave the fan there, and then, when that was brought to the board, there was a request for an engineering opinion, right? So, we went and got Al on board, Al's given us an engineering opinion, we had Jack provide an opinion, and we had C.B. Davis called in just on the side, he didn't, he didn't charge us anything.
They came out, looked at it.
And they came out and looked at it, and so you have what he wrote, so...
Is Jim Grenier an engineer?
Jim Grenier worked for the ventilation company up there in...
That is not an engineer, okay, right?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking, I'm just correcting what I want, but we've got one professional engineer who sealed his letters, saying we want to do it this way, and if we go against that and have a problem, I think we've got a real liability. If we have a, if we have a problem going with his recommendation, at least we can fall back on that, he's got a responsibility. I'm not saying that C.B. Davis doesn't know what they're talking about, he said that there, yeah, I missed it, yeah. I'm not saying that these people aren't knowledgeable, but he's a professional engineer, he's licensed. That's, that's the best we have to go with.
I wish I could tell you what recommendation, I mean, I don't disagree that the engineers is probably the, you know, at least the most studied, I don't know if it is the most feasible, will it work or not, I don't know, I just don't know what to tell you guys.
What do you say?
It looks like we've got three choices here, we've got Jack, and we've got C.B. Davis, and we've got Al Hodgson. And Al Hodgson and C.B. Davis are kind of on the same page, in terms of added fans, down, and I think we might be in agreement that Jack's option isn't something that we want to consider, because, you know, removing panels from the building isn't something we can really try, I guess. So, when we take two out of three and say, "Let's go with the two fans on the side," the next step, ideally, would be to price the fans, whether it's the half-size, the half-size capacity that Hodgson was suggesting. I like his idea that, I think it was Al's idea, that the two fans should be separately switched, so that you don't have to run both unless you need to, so, then, you know, if it's, I don't know, if it's a huge cost savings, then half-size fans works, but if there isn't that much of a cost savings, maybe having large-capacity fans there, too, certainly solve the problem in terms of we have more capacity than we need, especially if there's, if there's like a, you know, low, medium, high kind of switch on a fan in terms of how much air it moves.
Well, if you want, I can move forward with that, talk to Al, I can send you, well, you really need to take a vote one way or another before we move forward.
I guess I'd make the motion that we vote to proceed with two fans on either side, down lower, as per Al Hodgson's illustration here, and we get pricing on what our options are for those fans.
Okay. One second. I just wish I could give you an absolute...
Basically, we're going to adopt Al's recommendation.
Yeah.
More or less, and that's kind of what C.B. Davis is suggesting as well. Yeah, but not quite the same, so I understand we should say we're going to adopt Al, but C.B. Davis, yeah, rather than redesigning ourselves, yeah.
You want to just add that to your motion?
Sure, I'll add that to my motion.
Okay, and Al, second to that.
And I'll go...
Any more discussion?
Well, so does that mean then we're not going to even ask the question of, you know, what would be, would there be an added benefit to doing two full-sized fans versus half-sized?
I believe that's...
Let's proceed with the, the motion is basically to proceed with two fans, the two additional fans on either side, down lower than the one fan in the center, and we get pricing on, you know, the half-speed fans versus...
Pricing on the two sides.
...half-size fans, and have them both switched separately.
And installation and...
And, you know, yeah, installation would be good, and if we could have pricing on that, if we could get pricing on that sooner rather than later, then we could make...
I'll get that, I'll get that out to you, so...
Then, quite possibly, if whoever we're dealing with, we get them to sort of put a rush on it, and then maybe it could be done by August, or some time in August.
Well, before the end of August, and I really wish I could give you better kind of advice, it's just that I had hoped that the smoke test would have provided us the solution, and it just didn't.
I just want to be clear on the motion, I just need to be clear, we're going with Hodgson's, Hodgson's proposal, but also going to price out full-size fans?
Here's what I understand, if I can repeat it, just so that we all see if we're on the same page, because ultimately I'm going to be...
I'd like you to do that.
Okay, so we're going to proceed along Al's proposal, we're going to look at two fans, one being half-size as an approach versus a full-size as an approach, look at the pricing to see what the variations are, if the pricing is a two distance, I would, too far apart, I would assume you, for the fans, I'd assume you would go with the larger size, we're going to switch them separately, so that you turn them on and off, and, and then, once I get the pricing information on that, that I can just let you know how we're going to proceed, or how, what the prices are, and I can send that out to you.
Sure.
And...
Okay.
Everybody?
You're saying, we're looking at two different fans, this is a large one, and a half-size one.
No, 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 we're going to look at pricing, two fans.
Both fans are going to be the same.
One's, one approach is to have two, two the same, but at the larger size, the one that, the same size, the 22 CFM, and then looking at two 11 or 12 CFM.
Can we get some sort of feedback as to whether the, having a larger fan is going to do anything more for us than the two half-size fans? Seems that they're probably more expensive.
Well, and the installation costs will be more, probably, but that's something I'll, I'll just have to get.
Let's just see.
You don't know what the differential in the price is going to be, though. And if it's going to be a better option for us to, you know, are we going to put a half-size fan in there, and then, a year or two from now, be like, "We should have just done the big fans," because this is what we're trying to achieve, so maybe just ask Al.
Yeah, I'll get...
You know, I understand the two half-size were these two plus this one, these two equal this, and maybe that's what his thought is, is that in this triangular pattern, if we have all three going, then these two are going to balance out to this, or do...
Yeah, that's what I understood.
Or if we have three all the same size...
All three fans are going to be pushing area or pulling area?
Just go, be suction-based.
All getting pulling air out.
If it makes any sense, you can get more water through two small cupboards than you can one big one.
Okay.
Just...
I understand, from a fluid dynamics point of view.
We didn't talk about that.
I'm just telling you, so I don't know why it would be any different with a fan.
Well, but two, two big fans will move more air than two small fans.
That's right.
Maybe.
Here's a car versus one. You're like, my box fan versus my little table one.
That's right, your little table one.
My little table one just moves like you.
All right, are we all set on that?
Yeah.
All right, I get the table, all on table?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, new business, Historical Society, Rod Johnson, looks like an update on the town now.
You've got to go first, right?
Yes, you do.
All right. So, I am here as a, I would say, a chair of the fundraising committee, we've got a big mailing going out here in about D. Perso, and, which always leads to, the fundraising committee also gets involved in the building committee, and we have a proposal we're working on with Hammond Lumber, they've done some drawings for us, to basically rehab the old townhouse up here at the cemetery, and put a small addition on one end, so it would become the Belgrade Historical Society permanent home for artifacts and so on, it would essentially be a museum, be what people will probably call a Belgrade museum, from time to time, I'm sure. So, I wasn't here, being a snowbird, but I know there was a vote of last November that the referendum...
Yeah, there's a referendum.
For, see how the townspeople felt about this happening, and apparently, there was about a 900 and something to 100 and something...
It was a fairly overwhelming, favorable approach.
So, I don't know, I think what I'm looking for here is to make sure that, I believe in that vote, I think the wording had something to do with, that we had the authority to repair, renovate, and, I don't know exactly the wording on it, but with the approval of the town selectman. So, I guess what I brought down here was just to kind of run by you what we want to do, and get approval for it, before we send out our letter, our fundraising letter, because I'm going to show pictures of what it is now, and what it would look like then, in the fundraising letter. So, I just tried to get the horse before the cart here.
Go ahead.
Now, the historical value of that building, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't a certain percentage of the building have to be retained in order for it to keep its...
We applied for it to be put on the historic, or National Historic Register, and it did not qualify, we had a state museum person at the time, I forget who it was, I think it's in the documentation you have, come in and look at it, and essentially, and then, Bernard Fishman, the current museum director, came up and he said, "The basic value of this facility is its historic location, so much of it has been taken apart, rebuilt, you know, been used for other purposes, and a lot of the original aspect of the building is gone." So, there's, there, even, so the, if you, well, I don't know if you were here, but when the board adopted the referendum question, there were some, there was a member of the public that was opposed to it at the time, he says, "I want to, you've got renovation on it, and it should be restoration, and it should be," but the fact of the matter is, there's no way to restore it, we don't know what the actual building looked like when it was originally built, we have no records of that, and much of the building is gone. So, the historic value is little, if none, according to our efforts at least, and then through Nan Maris to get it on the Historic Register, all right, and through what Bernard Fishman said, Adam, two years ago, when I had him look at it, or three years ago.
I don't remember the wording of the article, but was it basically describing what's here, what you're going to do, including the gift of land from the...
It really, the article didn't specify the actual renovation, restoration, it said that the Historical Society would bring that for approval to the board, and if the board approved it, I mean, the town essentially allowed for the board to approve.
My question is, because I was thinking, my question is, does the town have to approve the receipt of that gift of land? That he's going to, he's going to give land to be accepted, is that right?
Well, that, that's a separate issue, that's from what he's asking.
But, you know, really, at the moment, as far as David Stevens...
But that is, you're right, that would have to be accepted.
Now, are we able to access the warrant article? I hate for us to be...
Well, sure. Can you get the last year's, it'd be the fall referendum?
Maybe while they're doing it, I can give you guys some ideas.
If that's the question, if they don't have right to have interest in that land, how are we going to give them, how are we going to position them to give them, he's asking, requesting the bill approval.
Yeah, I haven't gotten that far.
You can't give the billing permit anyhow, he has to go to a planning room for that.
You've got to go to a planning room for that one. You're affirming what the vote, as far as I understood it, that the vote that the town made last year specifies that the selectmen have to approve the changes in the building, and the work we want to do.
Well, that's what I understood, Rod, when you asked to get put on, I understood what you were asking for, that you're going to show them what you, what the Belgrade Historical Society intended to do as a result of the fundraising.
I didn't want to move forward until we got that verified. Basically, yeah. Yep, so, let's see.
I'm not against any of this, I think you would agree.
All we, all this really shows, this is Hammond's little sketches.
Right.
It's the, the building as you see it now, basically, it's just about that, 24 by 24 addition unit there, so it just gives us another...
So, the additions can be 24 by 24?
Yep, so it's 32 square, the original building, and then there's a 24 square on the end of it, so it's about 1,000 feet here, and about 5,000 feet seven there, some different angles.
59 square feet, is that enough space for artifacts and stuff?
You know...
We have none, except for the Center for All Seasons right now, and what you see around here.
This is really just the annual...
And when they looked at it originally, back in 2012, I think, when they were looking at it, no, back in 2009, when they were looking at the full, in a multipurpose building, they were requesting at that time that...
Can I make copies of those, so we can all look at them?
I think he did, oh, I thought you had copies.
I have a few, I have, these are the original building, really, as it sits now, and...
Well, I can pop out shells out there, we can just make a copy.
That's an artist sketch of the, this is the artist sketch, this is the original building.
I think it's one of those, and they're just going to go copying right up here.
Yeah. So, there's not a lot to look at, but just a basic idea, and it's clear from looking over the building in detail, that there's not a lot there to say, I think we're going to end up, no exchanging, whole for him.
And they have a reference on it?
The, I've been under, you know, called under it, they're all hand-hued beams, and they're cold powder post beetles like mountain barns, the corner post, the one of whom that we, when we took the tank out a couple of years ago, that corner we opened up, and that, that corner post is pretty old shot. So, you know, I think realistically, the most that's really going to be saying is maybe the roof, that has, got a nice steel roof on it, if we could pick that off with a crane, we may be able to put in four new walls and a floor, and set it back on, but that's, the only real reason to do that would be to try to maintain, to retain some of the old beams that make up the roof. They're, they're so sagged, if you stand by the building and you look at the E with your eyes, line it up with the peak, the belly sweep like all these old barns, because they really only had four or five rafters, and then they had curlings in between, so over time, a couple hundred years, you get, you know, that's, I think that's going to be, we just have to make this a determination, we're working on it.
So, what do you think the cost of...
Right now, we're looking at, we're asking in our fund drive, we're looking for 165,000 to do the building, and we're doing, looking for an endowment of another 60, and some probably $5,000 worth of cost of the fund drive.
So, the total?
Uh, 235.
That's enough.
Should be, because we're hoping to get, we're hoping to get some discounts on Lumber, and this and that, and some light kind of labor, electrical.
We could always get more.
Yeah, so if we get more, we won't give them back, or...
Is the cemetery committee all simple this, I mean, looks like they're going to take some of their...
I was going to say, I didn't think you could build anything for 165.
I haven't actually talked to the cemetery committee, it's good, shouldn't...
Oh, when we had talked before, I didn't think there was a problem, because I raised it, but I raised the issue, but we have, I don't think anyone's gone to them.
No.
I mean, I think there's one thing that should...
Certainly, Bob Lewis is part of it.
Yeah, Bob is on the committee.
And he's on, he's on the board, but we can make an official visit to them, and make sure we get set up.
I just think you would care to see, nothing else.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree with you, I hadn't thought about it. Good idea. So, you know, we've been working with Hammond's on drawings and pricing out stuff, and we're also working on them, they probably will be very helpful, we hope, and...
Melanie, just to let you know, I had asked if they'd approached the cemetery committee, and we had, we talked, and at the beginning, Rod said that he's definitely going to make an official...
Yeah, I'll call Bob Lewis, kind of like this.
Yeah.
Here's what the...
Good courtesy.
Yeah, absolutely. Here's what the referendum question said. Shall the town vote to allow the Belgrade Historical Society, the society, to expend money donated to them for the restoration slash renovation of the old townhouse building located on Cemetery Road, in order that the society can use it for the storage and display of its collection and other activities, providing that the plans for the restoration slash renovation are submitted to them and approved to, and approved by the board's, by the board. Society has the authority to hire contractors, or, let me read that once again, "Once plans have been reviewed and approved by the board, the society has the authority to hire contractors or arrange for qualified volunteers to perform the work. All aspects of the restoration, renovation projects shall be the responsibility of the society." In other words, it was asking the town, if the board approves whatever the Historical Society requested, then the Historical Society could proceed on its own with that action.
I think that answers the question.
Are these to be considered the plans?
Essentially, yes, yep, rebuild the old building and add on to it a 24 by 24.
And you're going to have a toilet in it?
There'll be more specific plans, pardon me?
You're going to have a bathroom in it?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, maybe not a... This was done, this was done a few years ago by John...
Get your copy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Cat, this is a little, little sketch, and this may not be exactly like this, but it's going to be, you'll have to get a bathroom, there'll be an outside bulkhead, there'll be a full cellar under all of it.
Basically, what we're doing right now, we're getting you okay that you're going to go ahead and build something there for the fund drive, the fundraising.
Right, yeah, I want to be able to include...
Well, essentially, once the plans have been reviewed and approved by the board...
But this is just for the fundraising, once you get the plan to what they're going to do, I think they're going to have to come back to us, and I don't think that...
So, I mean, we don't intend that we'll do anything majorly different, it's, you know, we can, we can give you, you know, sort of a Hammond-type, a little more detail or something like that, and, you know, we've already broken, you know, cost of materials and...
Can I correct on that, is that what you think? This is basically just for the fundraising right now, and then I'll get the funds.
Well, and I'll make a motion that, you know, we can, we have a conceptual plan that we can look towards some fundraising for, but I think, until the cemetery committee's been talked to, until there's something more finalized, I mean, how many times does the town start a project that we are sure we're going to have these features in, and then, then they're not?
Well, the one thing I'll say is, the Historical Society is not part of it, so what I believe Rod is trying to ask for, is in their fundraising, they want to assure the people that they're requesting funds from, that in fact, the board is in agreement with this approach.
I think that's what I was trying to say.
And furthermore, that, I would assume, Rod, once the, once the fundraising goes forward, and as it's going forward, you'll develop plans after you... and as it's going forward, you'll develop plans after you speak to the cemetery committee.
I was trying to make sure that I was following what the referendum.
Right, right, I understand that.
Uh, you know, so that I wasn't overstepping, moving forward too fast.
Yeah, you didn't want to, and so, at the next stage, you certainly would want the cemetery committee approval. But having said that, Bob Lewis has been on this committee for a long time. I don't think he's on the board right now.
No, but he has been.
But he has been throughout this process.
He still comes to meetings.
He's on one person.
No, 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 I get that, so I, my, my, my assumption would be that he's talking to the committee, but that may not be occurring, so.
I'll second your.
Discussion?
Yes.
What do we do, should not, should be clear, should not subvert the planning boards authority to review and approve.
Anything that's not that spoken.
The cemetery commission, committee, the advisory committee, they have a problem, they have to come back to us. Just so that's clear, and any other, any other committee would be the same thing.
Well, if it's not clear from the referendum, that article says that the board of select persons has to approve it, not the planning board, and there really needs to be another tier.
Well, the planning board, they didn't.
We have to follow the ordinance, and the planning board review and permitting process is part of all this. I think what this was indicating is, we can't, even with a planning board permit, we couldn't proceed without your authorization, so I think that this was intended.
All right, anybody else today then? Seeing none, an inattainable, all in bits? Thank you, fine.
So we'll proceed with our fundraiser, and then I'll come back with more stuff, and, and I'll get a soil test, get, talk to David there about that end of it too. And you've already talked to him.
Well, I have, and he's going to give us the land.
Yep.
The problem that ultimately will come up is we have to get that accepted at the spring meeting. You know, the town has to vote to accept that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
You guys are done?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you later.
Can I have a quick question, clarification? We, we as the town accepts the land on which this building.
No, 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 no.
Next door neighbor.
There's a next door neighbor. As we've been going forward, there was questions about, are you going to put in a utility, like a bathroom? We said, yeah, but we're not going to put the septic system in the cemetery, right? Because there's not enough room.
Okay.
Well, no, there's not enough room.
No, it's clear now.
So we have to accept. Well, we could have, well.
Chambers in.
But we didn't want to go through that.
I don't want to go.
So David's, in, in hearing about this, said, look, I think it's a great idea, we're going to give you that section of land. And the issue then is, well, we, you can't just give it to the town, the town has to have it accepted.
Yes. I do understand now. Seems like we had an ordinance in the past that gave the select board the authority to accept gifts of land.
Right, that's what I was just going to say, didn't we just, didn't we just have that as a, as a reference?
You may have, I will look at that.
I was like, I thought that we had that.
Well, we had to go to the.
But I don't know if there's a dollar value on that.
Right, and that's what I'm wondering.
I'll have to look at that.
To, to accept gifts to the town, in the name of the town, as long as it was in the town's interest, the select board could do it without having to go to town.
Well, I think that's great.
Except that the board has, in the case of the streetlights down in the village, the sidewalks, the board insists on going to the town.
In the same way with the Larry Mace donation.
That was before the referendum.
Yeah.
Or before the, before the.
Like that's been on the, on the books for a while, because they raised that issue. They raised that issue. And we, we told, we told, yeah, excellent.
Why don't, why don't you find out?
I will, I'll look at, I'll investigate that and check it out. I, I thought, I thought it was always that any donation of land, accepting what you're saying, I, I just don't know, but I thought it had to be, go to the town, unless the town's already pre-authorized you, which I wasn't aware of, so.
So that's a party that wants like, the meeting minutes, where we can just do a search.
You got it. I thought about that, so on Facebook, or on town webpage, all, everything we said.
Right.
So, there is minutes, we don't have to have an authority, but we'll talk about that September. Anyway.
Hold on, hold on.
If I can, with the board's permission, I'd like to jump down to the ad hoc committee for the senior resources, I think Gary's going to miss, you know, Walker or something.
No, I'm going to, I think, that's.
No, I'm sorry.
Was it board's permission, I'd like to move down to that.
It's mine too.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, if I can.
But you should have the form, did you put the letter in there, Frankie?
Yeah, let me.
Go ahead, yes.
I just, as you know, at the last board meeting I was at, and I think I referenced a few times before, I mentioned to you the whole issue of NORC's naturally occurring retirement communities, issues surrounding what we're doing for seniors, what we're not doing, et cetera, and that I would like to be coming back with perhaps committee at some point in time to allow for an investigation on this issue to go forward. So, in all of this, over the last month, couple months, I guess, Gary has indicated an interest in this and thinks it's something that he would like to do, and he'd like to chair that committee, now this is an ad hoc committee. It's not, it's not a permanently standing committee at this time, it might turn into something else. But the committee basically is, is to review and make recommendations regarding existing services that we provide, programs, et cetera, also to identify and advocate for any other needs that they see. So, I basically put the ad hoc committee together with the authority, you know, it'd be the date that you approve it, the purpose, the committee structure, which essentially would exist, consist of memberships selected by Gary, I mean, Gary, he would appoint as chair, and then he would just get a committee together, and then move forward and come back to the board at some point in time with a report on this. I have been meeting, and I think Gary's met with, a group of elderly, or seniors, I should say, down at the Center for All Seasons, they meet on Tuesday mornings at 10 o'clock for the last few, at least two months, I think. I've been going down and talking to them on a regular basis, Gary's gone there. They seem very interested in this, and, so anyhow, the intent isn't to do anything right now except for do research, find out what we're doing, what we could be doing, what we might want to do, and how to go about it. Is that essentially a fair?
Well, I think Kathy had some good suggestions on it, that her, in the Boston area, that they are doing something.
Well, there's lots and lots of there are places that they are doing things like this. And we have some websites, we've looked at it, what other people are doing. It bothers me a lot to think of people dying in Belgrade and not being found for five days. That bothers me. And I think there's ways to get around that, not in every case, but certainly in some cases. And I think there are ways that are fairly easy. So, I'd just like to, I have several people that I've talked to about the committee. One is, is the director of the regional, the health center. Becky Steele is another that I've talked to, Mary Vogel is another. And I just, I think that if you look at a NORC, a naturally occurring retirement community, it's a term that ARP uses, and it's been around for quite a while, it doesn't exactly fit us, but we're rapidly going in that direction, when the average age of your community is 50, they say that you're a NORC at that point, and that age just kind of fluctuates periodically. But we had two people die, nobody knew about it, five days or four or five days later they found them. And I think there are other services, there are services that are available that people probably don't know about. Neighbors, Driving Neighbors is one, that's a three-town effort that is very successful, and I'm not sure that our older residents here know about it. So as I look at this, at the, what's, the committee's formed, I think at some point we would ask for a page on the town website, we would probably align volunteers. My first, first project that I thought of was a neighbors, or a phone friends project. And my mother-in-law was famous for this, she had a group down in Florida, they called each other every single day, just to check, to see if they were still kicking. And I think that volunteers would be happy to do that, as a matter of fact, the group down at the Center for All Seasons had, there were several people that volunteered down there immediately to do that, so. The other thing is getting out and finding these people, understanding that they don't all have access to the internet, getting them involved in some way where we could get, you know, the, the services available to them. The head of the health center said she's got pages, pages of stuff. You can call them 211, but a lot of people still don't understand that, so. That's kind of what I look at this committee, this ad hoc committee, doing. Come back and we'll tell you what we, what we found, what we think we can do. And at that time, probably ask to be, to be made a town committee. A YAC, yet another committee.
Do we need to make a motion to, to support the formulation of this ad hoc committee, or do we?
Well, generally with an ad hoc committee, even if it's ad hoc, like the, the board is kept apprised of the makeup of the committee, the members, and, you know.
I think, I think the intent, yeah, and I agree, I think the intent would be for the board to generally show its support. Again, they could go out and do this on their own, but it's the issue of showing that the town.
Well, these are, our citizens, I wonder, has requested that, you know, we start looking.
These are our peeps.
Somebody want to make a motion to this?
I'd make a motion that we fully supports the formulation of this ad hoc committee and looks forward to hear more about it.
Then move on secondly, any more discussion on it?
Would you want to appoint Gary as the chair?
No, I wouldn't appoint Gary as the chair.
I thought he was going to say that. You can second that. All right.
One of the things we may want to look at is the folks who did mainly elderly, I think there's still an insistence, but they had started to build a retirement community on the Grand Pond Road, but then they were, there, there wasn't the interest there, but their philosophy was to build these homes, they would take care of the lawns and the trash removal and all those sorts of things so that folks could stay in their homes, and they would be checking on them on a regular basis.
I think.
And maybe what was the failure there?
Yeah, I think as a part of a long-term, as I mentioned when I, well, some of you folks weren't there when I was interviewed, the two issues I'm really concerned about, as town manager, I really wanted to focus on, besides all the other issues, but, but the two issues that I had on my mind were a Lakes Region watershed district, wazai governmental approach to managing our lakes, and the other one being something to do with the elderly, trying to make sure that we're providing adequate services for the elderly, and it could be up to including a public-private partnership in a progressive care facility. I'm not saying that that's how it would work out, but, so your, your comments are along the lines, long-term lines, that I think might come out of this, it might not come out of this, I don't know what's going to come out of this. I do appreciate Gary, Gary's willingness to take it along.
I appreciate, I could just simply say that I think there were some recommendations in the comprehensive plan about.
I made sure it was in there. I made sure it was in there.
Any more discussion on it?
Absolutely, make sure.
Seeing none, an inattainable, all in bits?
I didn't see Gary, I bear it didn't vote.
Thank you, Steve. I was going to tell them where they could go in the morning, Steve. I was going to tell them where they could go in the morning.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it. Take care, Gary, thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary.
I know, it has, but I wasn't aware that there was a regular group. Until.
It's an ad hoc group.
All right. Moving right along, through the streetlights.
Let me, let me do it really quickly. This is something I've talked about before, and I think in the last budget, maybe I didn't, I keep my memories mixed up, but LED streetlights and conversion LED streetlights along with town ownership of those lights could save a significant amount of money, as I showed you in the articles that I presented, there are some issues. I kind of outlined the spreadsheet that I provided, there's, it was based on Thelma's experience and what they, they had worked out. And, you know, we pay about 8,200 a year for our streetlights. 71%, say 70% of that is primarily for leasing lights. Now, you figure 70% of 8,000 is about, say, 5,700, but say $6,000, just for roughly figuring. And we've been doing that for how long? Say 20 years, 30 years? And we're paying a lease rate on that. Now, they maintain them, but the maintenance is very infrequent, all right? So, the concept here, and what I'm just looking, it's kind of an update, but I'm looking forward as a budgetary issue maybe, and that's, I'm glad you're here. I'm looking at potentially proposing through a warrant article at the town meeting, but I have to work out more of the numbers and get them more accurate. Buying our own streetlights, and it could be done over one year, or whatever number of years, I suppose, and then having them replaced, and we save on electricity, and we save on the lease costs. We would have to hire a contractor to put them in, and it has to be certified for CMP, so I'm looking at those costs as well. I just don't know whether or not, if you folks think it's worth my time to continue investigating this. There's about $27,000 we spend, I mean, about $8,000 we spend on the streetlights a year. It would cost, say, $20,000 plus or minus to, to do this project, but you would get that back, even if it was $25,000, it would be a payback of five years or less. So, that's, that's what I put it here for. If you don't think it's worthwhile going forward, I, it, it'll save me time, but I just thought it was a worthwhile proposal to discuss anyhow.
I think it's, I think it's worthwhile. It doesn't take us to the way, the way things will go in the future, and, but I do have a couple of things. One of them, all the lights on Main Street that are listed here now, they're going to be replaced anyway. Where the, the Friends of the Village putting in those new, new streetlights.
So we're still going to have streetlights that are, that were on the poles.
Okay, so the, the other thing is, before we go into too hard, I was a little concerned about this, this statement about the LED lights affecting the human sleep cycle. Now, are they talking about indoor lights or outdoor lights?
These are the streetlights. And, and if people are right near a streetlight, some people having, you know, if the streetlight comes into the window. I don't know how many cases there are that, we have a very sparse number of street, it's 47, but we don't have a lot of them.
Again, thinking about Main Street, that was one of the things that we heard, the committee, even concerned about, you know, the lights all right now are, because they, they come in the windows.
Well, these would be all down-facing and would be an effort, of course, they're all.
Down-facing now.
Yeah. Like I, as the article states in here, there, there are issues that people have raised about them. So I mean, there are issues, there are several towns that are going forward, CM, forward with the conversion. CMP is fighting these, these conversion efforts. I can see why. Right? I mean.
Well, that would be reason enough to move forward.
Having said that, I, I just, I looked into it enough to do some rough cost estimates, I think it's reasonable to go forward. I don't, and I want to be able to spell out a little bit more accurately, obviously, the cost savings and all of that. But I just, it's going to take, you know, some of my time, so I wanted to make sure it was something that you would support.
I would recommend going forward with it, and there is what the amount of electricity they've been saving.
I bet there's a lot.
I think, I, I think there was something in here that referenced that, I didn't put it down, but I.
Well, and I also would like to see if there's anyone across the country who's not a pro more long-term, and, you know, how it disrupts your night vision. And, you know, as it is now when I'm traveling, and somebody has those bright LED headlights, your inclination is to look away. And if you have your streetlights coming down, and people are squinting and looking away.
And this is why I put this one.
Aren't these LED lights out here? Hang on, hold it.
I would like to move forward with this, but being in the health profession, I'd be more than happy to research what's available and information about LED lights and their effects. As I read through here, I had a lot of questions as to where did this information come from?
What information is that?
They come from, well, the information about, all I see is that people.
You mean in the articles that I provided? Yeah, I provided the articles only as a very.
Right, I get that, I would like to really research it a little bit more.
I think that'd be great, that would help me out.
Yeah, and to really understand a little bit more about it. And do some, you know, do some research around whatever the sleep study people are doing. I do not know. So, I'd be happy to do that.
I support you.
Thank you.
I, I didn't read all the detail, it may be a little bit more expensive, but I think that LEDs can be basically built to.
Whatever.
Whatever, whatever color temperature you want, and, and if it's the, if it's the blue, the hard blue that is, you know, too cold to be reasonable for people working in or being around, then, you know, we might have to spend a couple more dollars, but you could certainly get a warmer color.
Right.
That would, that would. That would, that would probably mitigate a lot of the, the health concerns because.
Nightlight on your phone and the nightlight on your iPad.
I mean, we're, we're living in lighting now and people are, you know.
Fluorescent was a problem for.
Well, it is, it is, but.
Well, when Steve's appliance put up their new sign, then they had the LED lights when they first built it, then it was not very long after that that they had to come back and, and dim some of that down because it was so harsh on people during nighttime and the.
It violated state laws. Still is.
You know, I, I think it's definitely worthwhile. I mean, I, I would be even more for, let's throw some solar lights up and not pay CMP a thing.
Well, again, that's a different, that's a.
So, do we, what do we want to do? Do we want?
I'm supportive of continuing to research it and support the possibility of it and.
And I'll try to get a couple of folks that knows more about lighting than I do to, to help me with this, so.
I don't think we know, need an official vote on this, just a.
No, I just, I kind of wanted to bring it forward to you and it was more important to me than an update, you know, an update doesn't.
As you move forward, you know, we may decide to do a piecemeal instead of all the loans or, I mean, there's several options to do attacking this one. Like the, the statement about Main Street, you know, the lights that are going up on Main Street are going to be new lights, so maybe it's.
Maybe they'll be.
To make them be LED right from the get-go because they're, you know, they're not using the same streetlights. They're putting new lights on new walls. So, you know, that section could be done already.
We want to get our research done.
Yeah.
So, move forward with research.
I would say move forward with research. Oh, well, Harretson, one of the things that we learned in the committee, on the Main Street committee, is that they can, they do have the lights, they can change the colors. You can put in a white light, you can put in a white light and you can actually change if necessary.
Dim it or something.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly. When did you have that kind of light?
Well, they also moved towards more reddish kind of lights too, for the same reason because they're easier at the outset.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. I, it's one of those things that you, you know, you read about. I wanted to make sure that we're doing the best we can to conserve money, but sometimes you have to spend money.
Let's get right onto the town manager.
Oh, you want to do the one first?
The town manager first.
Oh, okay. I didn't.
Yeah. You don't want to be able to get on the town manager?
I don't.
All right, get him on, wait there.
Okay, you want me to go for it?
Sure.
I just wanted a, a couple of things that I heard as a result of the last board meeting, which I wasn't at. The reason why the old town office, the old town office building issue was on the board for reduction of price was because at the meeting in March, the issue was brought up. Joan asked me to bring the issue up and at that time the board said, bring it, set it back until after July first. So, that's what I did. So, at the, I looked at the March sixth meeting. It's the only reason I did it. I wasn't trying to, although Joan truly believes that if we don't reduce it, it won't sell. So, she says there's no real interest in just advertising for it because right now it's, it's dead, so to speak, in terms of interest. So, that's that. As the, as Melanie updated you at the last board meeting, there's, there's more complications with trying to get all of these insurances together than we might have thought. The one thing, now, we're working on doing that over a period of time. It'll take a while to get that stuff together, as I understand it. The one thing that I think she indicated that she was doing was putting an RFP together on health insurance because that's the biggest part of our insurances. So, you folks, as I understood, would like to have a committee review that. We'll bring a committee together. Do you have any names so I can get them together? I just give you names.
I think that was something we wanted to work on over the summer.
Yeah.
Nothing to hear that health insurance can't do that.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a problem in trying to bring all of this stuff together. So, because the, the contracts are signed at different dates, so you have to get a group, you have to work to get these things together. You have to, so it'll be a year before you can really get this done. We, we weren't aware of that anymore than you folks were.
I know Steve Smith wanted to be on it.
Yeah, he's going to, he's going to, he's actually participated already in helping us with the RFP and stuff.
And I think Ernie Rice wanted to be on it.
That's, if you would like to have Ernie on it, then we'll bring you in.
I think he wanted to be there.
Okay, that's fine.
I fired a call, all right, but. Ernie Rice wanted to be on that.
You're reviewing.
Health insurance.
Health and property.
Property, but some of this won't be brought together all at once.
I would be more than happy to help review the health insurance.
Yes, that's the last minute.
Kathy Wall, Ernie, Steve, let it be Melanie.
I think you got plenty.
Alexandra, who?
I think you got plenty.
Just those four? Melanie Alexander.
You got Steve Smith you got in?
Yeah, Steve Smith. I got Kathy Wall, Ernie Rice, and Melanie Alexander.
You'll probably be on it.
Well, yeah, I'll be there, certainly.
I'll have five of them at least, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, good enough. That's what we're going with. Okay. Center for All Seasons, we're still waiting for prices, otherwise we'd come in with a final proposal. Handicap access proposal. The other reason that came forward, as it did, was because I was getting complaints on Election Day, June 12th, about people potentially stumbling or actually stumbling. So, I brought that forward. Gary had told me that originally there was supposed to be a proposal and I said, well, it probably won't work the way it's set up now going to the concrete, so why don't we just come out that way? So, I don't, and that was the reason why I brought forward. My understanding from the last meeting discussion, you can reaffirm this, is that you'd prefer that not to happen and that you would want the traffic, so this will bring all the traffic through.
All in the hand again. I don't think we can separate them.
I don't know. We'll have to check into, she, her, she's raised the issue of whether or not we can separate the traffic.
Well, I asked, I think that was part of the question I asked, if it's going to be able to do that, but I don't know why it can't because a lot of places do that now.
Okay, so we, we will investigate that and I'll bring it back. And then what we'll do is we'll just signage it, if, if it's allowable, we'll signage it so it goes this way. If it's not allowable, we'll bring it back and you can make a, whatever decision.
It just didn't seem to be very well noted via signage that handicap access is this way.
Well, we were bringing everyone in one, one index.
Yeah, and then.
To physically control because out there, we bring people through, it's going to interfere with the business operations.
But that's a lot more money than what that article even said. I mean, that was just for getting a walkway. You got to put a handy accessible door, the automatic door, that's ten grand.
I was only, I was only providing the price of the actual ask.
Right. So, I mean, there's a lot more to it than.
Certainly.
You got two doors, you know, put it on.
Yeah.
It also looked, as I looked at it later and I looked at it a day or two later, if you do it as it was proposed in that, it didn't have the right grade for handicap.
I think it would. We actually kind of talked about that a bit. But having said that, that doesn't make any difference right now. What we'll do is we, we will make an investigation, we'll bring it back.
Absolutely.
So, that's not a problem. I, I just wanted to make sure we were there.
Part of that investigation was perhaps, if needed, an additional clerk on Election Day to help, you know, be.
Help with the traffic.
With the traffic or, or even assist people who need assistance perhaps, you know.
And you volunteered?
Well, I'll consider taking under advice.
I want you to wear pants and not in legs.
Okay. So, we'll come back. We'll get you the law and all that. Rental of the Ten Dalton, I, you had a discussion about this last meeting in terms of whether you wanted to continue as I, as I provided some email exchange. Well, this is the rental of Dalton properties. You had asked for it to be put on the last meeting, an overall discussion. During the week, this week, or was it not this exact week?
It was last.
It was last week, not this week. Lois DeRais, well, the agent that rents the facility for us, our agent, called me up on Wednesday, I think it was, and said, could you get me a price for rental on Thursday no later than Friday because we have a potential renter? So, I didn't know who had the authority to do the rental. I asked Melanie to work up the question. Called Ricky and I says, do you know who has the authority? Do I have the authority? Does the board have the authority?
And he did.
Yeah, yeah. So, Ricky responded and, and so I moved forward with, with that and didn't mean to put anyone in an awkward position, but I, I went to the chair thinking, one, you were here, one, the issue was set up. But, but also I, then I put out a message to everyone of what happened. And I understood your question about that and I don't disagree. I'm just saying that that was the reason why it came out. The one reason why I couldn't go out to a vote via email, certainly we could provide the information, is because you'd have to come in and vote in public. It's a public vote. I don't think, so, I mean, maybe there's other things I'm not aware of, but at least that's what I understood.
The other thing, there's never a time that I'm going to speak for the board. They have sounded like that, but you know me better than that.
Well, and I, I wasn't just, that particular thing was sort of like, but in, in the past that has happened where the chairperson of the board or select persons thought that they had the authority to speak for the board.
He was clear, he said we.
When you read the bylines and the bylaws for a select board, the chairperson's only additional job is to maintain order at the meeting and follow the agenda.
And set the agenda.
And set the agenda. So, and I just wanted to be sure that we were clear on that. And in the past, the policy has been, you know, like, okay, well, I've got to make, make sure everybody's aware of this, call in, check in, whatever, so that everybody knows what's going on as it's going on and not after the fact.
Well, it came up so quickly. I mean, really did come up quickly.
I think it was Thursday she called.
It was, I, I think it was a Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken. I asked Melanie to see what she could do on Thursday, see if she could work up something and she did.
Going late in the day.
Yeah.
I have sort of a side question, Harrison. Are we, do we do email votes?
No.
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 You don't do email votes.
Is there a reason?
Because, because everything that you do has to be done in public.
Okay.
You can't even, you can't even call in if you're sick, call in at a meeting, at a meeting, you know, just like.
You can't?
You know, if you're.
Yeah, I got it.
The other question though that comes out of this is who does have the authority to set that? Does the board have the authority or does the town manager?
I thought we put a town manager.
Set the rental rate?
I don't know.
Well, and I think that we had discussed potentially adding heat to it because who knew we'd be in a predicament where they let stuff go and put five gallons in at a time, you know, and then that becomes detrimental to a town property.
Well, there was a vote taken last year after this happened by the board, then board, I don't think, there was a vote taken that said, you, we discussed it and you said, we want that into the, we want utilities included. We're charging market rate for the utilities. It's not our rate.
Maybe it was a negotiating path to challenge.
And are we going to put something in the building like regulating the temperature? So, if they decide they would like it at ninety degrees.
Well, that, that was a question during the debate that I think Jackson raised. Yeah, that was a question that Jackson raised, which is if you pay for it. But the current concern that both our, the plumber Bruce Kalush raised and I think the board had was that people are going to chintz on the fuel like they did, create a problem and suddenly it's going to cost us a lot more than charging the market rates fuel. So, that was the, so we, that was the issue. So, we took, you know, so we, we did our best in trying to figure out what that market rate being, and actually it's more money than what we would have paid for the fuel that rate gives us a, a cushion.
And we're looking at more than one type of fuel. So, when we say heat and hot water, then we have the propane stove. So, we've provided propane, then we're providing oil.
Yeah, propane used nine pounds last year.
The thing, the thing that we didn't even discuss today was background checks and that needs to be.
On the, on the rental?
Yes.
Okay. See, I didn't, I wasn't even aware of that.
Well, Melanie brought it up and I think, I think it's a good idea. We're right next to a town facilities and.
Definitely. Definitely hopefully.
I think it's a good idea, just never, because I thought that that's something that the rental.
And I meant to say that when I was talking and, and I caught my ultimate dump truck.
Maybe they do and maybe they don't.
Well, I'll check on that.
Well, I'm just sort of having a question in my head as to, your question was who sets the rent?
Well, I, I don't care who sets the rent. I just wanted to.
No, but I, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, all you people that have been there a while, seems to me that that's an operational kind of thing that belongs to the town managers managing properties for the, for the town.
That's a fair comment, but you know, the, the select board has the authority to set fees and.
Well, I think that the, the select board also has the, the authority to set policy about them. Policy would be, yeah, we'd like to have a background check and, yeah, we'd like to make sure all our bills are paid and that sort of stuff. And then sort of the nitty-gritty of how that gets done sort of goes to the town manager, doesn't it?
If you want to, yes.
Keep in mind.
Just asking.
The select board sets the price.
Go ahead, Mike. I know he had maybe an answer to this.
Yeah, well, we set, we set the price on sale property. Town manager might be talking to the realtor who set lower the price and it goes back to us and we say yes or no.
Right.
This is not a lot different. It's still priced.
He's in negotiating.
He can negotiate, then he can back to us just as he did.
And I know your problem.
You know, and I think.
Unless you, unless you want to make them, I mean, yes, select board I think has the authority to change it, but we need to change efficiently. I think, I think the town manager should have right to, I mean, we, we can just say as far as rentals go, you know, we want to rent it at market rate, whatever that is. We have a rental agent who is going to rent it at whatever market rate. I mean, that sort of negates, you know, you renting it to your brother for two hundred dollars a month, you know what I mean? So, you know, whatever the going rate is in this neighborhood for a rental that age and size or whatever, that's what the agent should be getting.
And this nine-fifty is in the market rate.
Yeah, you know, with heat or, you know, we, we certainly are within, you know, our duties to say we want to rent it with heat or for the reasons you state. It's a doubt.
Are you, have any trouble with this rental company at all?
Other than, I'd like them to be more responsive, but, but having said that.
Same problem.
Having said that, I mean, they've had some sickness. I, I've, I had talked to the owner, I think it is, at one point in time and I said, I need to talk to you about leases. He said, I'll get back to you. And I had to call four, four weeks later. So, but he was sick at the time, so I'll give that. I, I, other than that, I don't have a big deal with it. I mean, they're a rental agent.
Okay.
I mean, the responsiveness to me was an issue.
That they were having trouble with the rental agent and. But it is, you know what?
Well, the, the, well, well, let me back up. I told them when I first came, they took me through and they said, well, you can do this because the renters were not following the rules. They were, the place was a mess. And I went through and said, this has to be cleared and this has to be cleaned. And this was when I first took over and I first viewed the properties. And then I told the rental agent, Lois DeRais, I said, she said, well, you can, that's good, you can tell them to do this. I said, wait a minute, you're our agent, you're supposed to make sure that they're following the rules, and that's what I expect you to do, so.
How did we wind up with this rental agent?
I don't have any idea, other than you must've put it out to RFP or something.
No, I don't think so. I think town manager-
I don't have any idea. They were on board-
How long have we been renting it?
Been renting it since two thousand thirteen or fourteen.
No, one of the things I did ask for at the last meeting that I'd like for us to put forward, maybe for the next meeting, is I'd like an actual spreadsheet of what we've got in for money, what the costs have been involved with renting these properties, because the whole philosophy of what we went to the townspeople with was that if we purchased these properties for X amount of dollars in this amount of time, we would pay off those properties, and it would be income generating at that point. And are we, where, where are we at with this?
Where are we at? I can't give you an exact number, but I can tell you on an annual basis, at least a very gross number would be, you're getting about seven, seven fifty, probably more for the big room, but you're giving, say you're getting, on the average, eight hundred dollars per month for each of those buildings. So that's sixteen hundred dollars times ten is sixteen thousand, plus thirty-two hundred, which is nineteen thousand two hundred, right? So say, that's high, say you're getting fifteen thousand. I don't think that in the four years that we've rented, we've put anywhere near that amount of money in. It's a good question, how much have we, and we'll check that out, but I don't think we have. I think you're getting value back to pay back the building. Quite frankly, from my point of view, this is Denny Keschel's point of view, I find it difficult, well, I don't find it difficult, it's easy to do. It's, it's one of the things, I don't know whether the town should be in a landlord position, but that's me. I don't care what you guys do, that's just a question that I raised.
That was the question I raised.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah.
Well, and I think the whole philosophy was, we didn't wanna purchase the buildings to have them set empty, because then-
And it's making money, I don't disagree, I mean, it's making money.
I don't wanna look into the discussion as we're having now, to make sure that whatever we think of back then is still the floor.
Don't take my personal, I just, that's just me, I said it when, when I first heard it, but I understand the reason, hey, it pays itself back, it pays itself back. And it's a good rent, quite frankly, for anyone that rents it, because you got a boat dock that you can use, you got, it's really, if you treat it nice, it's a really nice place. I wouldn't, if I was a renter, I wouldn't do anything to upset anyone. I think it's a good deal.
Do we need to increase it?
Okay, that's, that's all, so I'll, I'll check into those things, you'll get that back. Okay, interlocal, okay. I'm not going to, other than raise the issue, we have two interlocal agreements on waste management, Rome and Mount Vernon, they're come due. I'm gonna bring it back to you next week, and I'm just letting you know that I'm going to have some wording changes in those agreements, that they automatically renew unless either party wants to change something. That way, you don't have to sign them every year, okay? So, they'll be back at the next board meeting with that change, if you're, if you're okay with that. Update on the unknown property, unknown owner of the property, we did get a research done, we got a clue to a potential owner, I called them, they came, they come immediately in, and they said, we don't think we own it. But what if we said we did and we paid the, I says, no, you gotta provide proof. So they're right now looking at that, and they're gonna get back to me, once we get that, we'll put out the, we'll, we'll put out the proper notifications on saying that we're taxing it to an unknown owner, put out the property, the proper notices and all that, and we'll start that process. Brightside Marina was in the paper today, if you have any questions, I can talk, it's essentially a dispute about whether or not the planning board interpreted the zoning ordinances right. The party, Brightside Marina, essentially believes that they interpreted them wrong, that's what's going to the appeals board, it's gonna be a de novo review, so.
You could best about, about, I have to say, it's in legal hands.
It's all, it'll be resolved, one way or another. The IT upgrades are underway, you will be getting an email talking about your outlook and how to do all this stuff. They don't want you to do anything about it until it completely uploads. So, we're, the last two days, we've been having some learning- No, no, they haven't made glitches, it's just, you know, different people use different systems, so.
Do you want to go back to Brightside for a minute?
Yeah.
Let them know town's attorney's gonna be there to-
Yeah, the town's attorney- The appeals board, which is primarily a fully, almost a new board, with the exception that GA just agreed to come back for this purpose, has requested that the town attorney be there at the meeting, so. Okay. No, there's no need for anyone to be there. We'll be installing the cages, the cages, the screens, whatever you wanna call them.
We're gonna put those guys in the cage.
Sometime in the next, sometime in August through the middle of August, we'll be working through that. The last question I have is just a question for you to ponder, because I've been pondering it over the last several months. It's something that the budget committee's gonna have to deal with, we're all gonna have to deal with, it's minimum wage increases. This year is the first year out of the three years that are gonna be increased minimum wage at a dollar, where it'll actually start encroaching on people already making near the eleven dollars issue, and it's going to push that whole, crunch the bottom end of that pay scale together. I'd like you to think about it, I'm gonna bring some proposals forward, I don't know if they're good proposals or bad proposals, but they're gonna be proposals to think about and talk about. I've had email going out asking what other towns are doing, I'm not getting a lot of feedback, because everyone's-
I'd say they don't know.
Yeah, so, you, you have a good background in some of this stuff, so you might be able to give us some proposals. I, I need to know how we're gonna handle that, by maintaining some fairness and equity, but not, you know, creating a situation where, you know, it's something that's unmanageable, you know? So, anyhow, that's my comment. With that, I'm finished.
You might wanna mention what's in the newspaper? It's already in the newspaper.
Do we have a newspaper right here?
Well, the, this is nothing more, as you remember, about a month and a half ago, I came to the board and said, it's, that, that, there was an opportunity for me to run for the State House, because Gary Hilliard was pulling out with drawing, and he asked me to run, and I put it to you, what you wanted to do, and I said, I could stay on work, if that didn't work out, we talked about it again. So that's what's in the paper, is, they went to the state secretary of state's office and vowed that my candidacy was in, and so, that's what's in the paper today, so.
She did put something in there that I did not say. She said, the board said they'll be fine with it. That's not what I said, I said, Rick Gammard personally said, I'll be fine with it.
Right.
She put that in there, but she added-
See, I knew that was gonna happen.
I know, it didn't take long, did it?
Well, at the meeting is-
Danny said he's gonna rent the apartment for nine fifty a month.
There we go, I did put that in.
At the meeting where we discussed, and I asked if the board, and you weren't there, but I updated you, and they were essentially, you were supportive, is what-
Right. I just, I just saw before you, see it in the paper tomorrow morning?
Okay, so that's-
Press is probably gonna call you guys.
You're gonna stop reading the paper?
I didn't, I got it sent to me tonight.
Yeah, because you were quoted, I wasn't even here.
Thank you. I guess the next thing on the agenda is the warrant? And, do I have it? You wanna do the privilege?
Enjoy the class.
Take care.
Thanks.
Hey, Howard, when you can, get that with me, and we'll try to set some things up.
All right, warrant number eighty-six, and the amount is? Five hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
Will I hear a second on that?
Forty-seven cents, yeah.
Well, that's different than the one we got in the book.
Yeah, the one that's in the book says oh seven.
Well, and she did send an updated one.
Yeah, an email.
There's, there's a reason for-
Well, and this one's nine fifty-five, and this one's four twenty-three, so something has been taken out, around five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars is-
Unlike the old one.
The vote made was seventy-eight.
Is it two of yours?
Well, it's, I'm not sure, it's just-
Did you change the, in the book?
No, because I wasn't given a million. I was only given the initial warrant, that's it.
Yeah, this is six, this is six twenty-nine. Yeah, the one she sent us is right, is it, one that you got? It was taken out of it, it did say, hang on, I need to-
Something that better be around five hundred bucks.
Said, I didn't pay spectrums last week until I-
Yeah, I, I know what the issue is.
Okay.
She's been trying to straighten out all of these spectrum accounts, in fact, they still got a town account in my name, all right?
Now, that's good.
It's not good, but, but, so she's been trying to straighten that all out, and I think she got some of that straightened out today, so there were some fluctuations in that, did she send that out today?
Yes.
Yeah, so, that was that, and there were two other items that came up that I didn't explain. One item was the cost of the permitting for the dam, because they put in the after-action permit for the repair of the dam, remember, we did that prior to that?
Something about stamps, or-
And then stamps for, and that issue was one where it didn't-
She didn't get, yesterday morning?
She didn't get the, yeah, something-
From the postmaster.
Right, the postmaster was out on vacation, she didn't get it in time for the, that's right.
So, I think we gotta go with that one, but I'm not sure it's the same as which one. The one I've got, I mean, I've got one for seven-
No, the one that was handed to you.
And then it adds to six twenty-nine, and the only place where it's totaled is the six twenty-nine, that's forty-one thousand dollars.
I have, you have one from the old one.
The old one?
Yeah, the forty-seven thousand.
You didn't pick up the one that she sent off the new one? For the reasons that he just said.
So, that's the newest one that was in my book, dated seven eighteen.
But it's not the right amount of money.
It's not the right amount of money, so this is the final one. Is the five seventy-five, four twenty-three, forty-seven.
That's the one you have.
So, I think what we need to do is go through this one that Melanie's got, because that's the right one.
She did.
That's the one that went bad.
You got photocopies you want?
Let's, yeah, let's take a minute.
I am sorry, because-
No.
No, I agree.
No.
What is a desk impossible?
That's the town seal.
Oh, yeah. Our town seals, that we put seals on, that we, when we certify something, we put a seal on it, that was worn to the extreme, starting from the street, so we bought a new one.
Why are they bossing desks?
No, we're not bossing desks.
Well, that's kinda what I thought too, but-
Bet you figured somebody else will ask you that.
Yeah, that's what I figured, I didn't want to hear it.
Didn't want to embarrass you.
Takes a lot to embarrass you.
I will make sure that if you haven't picked up your books in the future, if there's a warrant change, you will get the warrant change. She does, she did send them out, I know.
She, I got it today at eleven o'clock.
And she was briefing me around one o'clock, because I was out at, well, no, wait, when was that?
Well, it should've been, we had a final copy in a box.
You should've, exactly.
Should've been in a box.
Yeah.
That's what I-
Well, but if we've already picked-
If you picked them up, it should've been in your box.
Then we should've had something in a box.
We'll straighten that out, I think there's, I think there's-
In front of each other, so you could exchange it out.
There's a miscue here between the, the town clerk, we should really be putting those in the books instead.
Well, yeah, the thing is, if you send it over the wire-
Well, no, it's, I get it, I get it, you need it in the book too.
We need a hack.
Well, just a copy of it here, you know, when we come into the meeting.
Totally agree with you, just that's why I was a little bit-
She was hurrying Friday, because I came in after work, and she was like, hey, I'll put your book together, I said, I can come back.
She's making copies.
Thank you, madam.
Good thing we warmed up that copy up.
Get the right, no, we need the right copy, it's a copy just that we're holding.
That's the original.
That's the original?
Yeah.
Okay, so you need this one.
That's page nine, just put to that.
No, that's the one that came out of the book.
So you got the original there?
Someone's got the original, I passed it over.
That's the one you just took, you just got the copy. She took the original photo copy.
All right. So, did you give them the original? Let's give it to them so they can sign it.
Yeah, now, right, Melanie, you have the original.
Okay. I just need a copy for the original.
No, she's got the original.
It's a copy of the original.
So, let's hold your question again.
Okay, so, warrant number eighty cents, the warrant total of five hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
Will I hear a second on that?
Same.
Been moved in seconds. Now it's open for discussion.
Thank you.
Now we have to look at it.
I think it's the same thing you had in the book, only you've got to take it home.
Well, there was, there was an addition too, and that's the permit fee for the DEPs, application for the after-action permit for the Belgrade dam, the village dam.
How correct does this have to be, because there's a misspelled word in it?
As long as you, what's the misspelled word?
Gate.
What is it?
Under, the third one down here on the first page, aquatic technology, perforated gate, gate is misspelled.
You don't?
I'm sorry, my eyeballs pick those things up.
I know.
It's just-
It's Spanish.
We also have some stoweb bulbs on the next one instead of strobe. And why are we using Roundup?
Roundup.
The cemetery.
The cemetery's using Roundup, and then I talked to them at the transfer station, and they said, they use Roundup over there, and I was like, well, the water over here is impotable, but why are we, why are we using Roundup?
I don't know.
You have vinegar.
Go out there with vinegar, and it kills everything.
Including the bees.
Balsamic or-
Vinegar kills the bees?
Okay.
No, I was like-
Apple, white or balsamic?
White. I wouldn't risk my balsamic on the weeds, but I would go out there with a gallon of white vinegar any day of the week.
Roundup question.
Well, there may be other-
Roundup, unhook your DNA.
Yeah, maybe, well, that explains what's going on with the prices.
Is it still legal?
But, unhooking DNA?
No, illegal to use it.
Oh, it's legal?
I'm just being persnickly.
I know, you're just being dense.
No, I'll take it.
Anybody got any questions on this? If not, I'm gonna hang the vote.
I do not have any questions.
I just have my question, we're still doing dam repair, or?
Which item are you looking at? What's the check number? Oh, yeah, we had commercial divers down at the Wings Mills Dam to assess the problem. They've assessed the problem, they've made recommendations. I'm currently getting DEP, in fact, I'll be meeting with them on Thursday, to do one aspect of our erosion problem. But the dam itself, we're gonna be talking about with DEP at the August thirteenth meeting, about how best to go about it, and a couple other issues, so. And if you wanna know whether or not I have problems with someone, I have problems with people, one of the people I spoke with at DEP.
Can I do that?
I worked there for how many years, and I gotta-
Where was the tree? We paid a hundred dollars to-
The tree was downstream of the Wings Mills, of the Belgrade Dam, it was interfering with the dam, so they had pulled that out, that was paid off the dam.
Just a hundred bucks.
Well, I guess they got a good deal?
I guess they did, unless there was a sap or something.
I have no idea. I know I called him up on that, because Melanie was questioning that, I called him up, and he said, no, that was a tree that was interfering with the operation.
Anything else?
No, I just wanted to make a very nice comment, and that is that you have no idea how nice it is to look at a budget and see something like Mr. Drew and his animals too.
I don't know who Mr. Drew is.